Of the Mashpee Planning Board here at Town Hall at the LeCoyt Room 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The time is 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone, tonight here. We're being broadcast live on Channel 18 and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our elected leaders of the United States of America, in the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from August 2, 2023. Does anyone, has anyone, has everyone read the minutes? Does anyone have any changes or edits?
No motion to approve, as written.
Hearing none. Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes. So, you know what we, you were saying, aye to, right? Okay, we will have public comment after the board gives their committee reports. There will not be any public comment on the public meetings tonight, and you'll understand why. So, the first public hearing, we're not ready to do it, so. Let's go on to something we can complete. Is the engineer going to be here tonight?
Ed will not be here tonight. He was made aware of the continuances.
Okay. Do you want to go on the town planner report?
Sure. The harbor management plan, myself and the DNR director are going to be going to the historical commission meeting tomorrow night at 4:00 PM specifically to discuss a hopeful collaboration with the historical commission and the Wampanoag Historical Commission, Historic Preservation Office, to begin doing the research required to reestablish and affirm the town's ancient ways to water and public landings and public access points, all of which were identified in the 1998 comprehensive plan. I know that the Wampanoag Historic Preservation Office has also been asked to consider anything that we're missing for ancient ways to water, so that, and we're going to be asking the historical commission to participate in that research endeavor by doing the, you know, the title examination and deed research that would be required to reestablish those ways to water. So, that'll, it'll be a relatively simple presentation and discussion, but we're hopeful that members of the historical commission who know their way around the registry of deeds will be interested in taking up the project with us.
Can the public go there?
Absolutely. Public meeting tomorrow, 4:00 PM, at the Archives.
I just want to note that, was that meeting where Ashley was talking about establishing some of these ways to water and how there would have to be some land acquisitions for almost like trailheads and parking lots and stuff like that? So, if you see a situation where you're going to have to acquire something to make this happen, don't be discouraged because community preservation funds can be used for that acquisition. So, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Like, don't think, don't let a budget issue get in the way of putting that as a priority.
Sounds good. Next is, we've just generally wrapped up staff and non-staff interviews for the housing production plan. A big thank you to many of our town board committee commission members who did participate, some of our local businesses, service providers. It's my understanding that they were successful. We are hoping to set up additional discussions with some folks who weren't available at the times that we had allotted for those discussions, so I may be following up with you in the next couple of weeks to see what further discussions have ensued. But we are now looking towards September for our first public workshop, which I now need to remind myself of the date of. I believe we are looking at a Tuesday, and I'm going to just have to bear with me here for one minute while I figure that out, like to make the announcement. We are looking at September 19, which is a Tuesday, at the Mashpee Library Events Room, where we held, you know, our LCP workshops and such, at 6:30 PM. So, again, Tuesday, September 19, at the Mashpee Public Library, in the events room at 6:30 for the first public workshop for the housing production plan. So, you'll see materials in the advertising and things going out. We'll be back at the Affordable Housing Committee in early September, prior to the event, to have the agenda for the day solidified. We're bringing back a number of, we presented a draft survey and engagement plan to the Affordable Housing Committee at their last meeting. They provided a number of questions and comments, so we're working through edits to the survey, and we'll bring back that draft to them at their first meeting in September to finalize and be prepared to issue that survey towards the end of that month.
I might add to that. I went to the Zoom on one particular day. I think John Cotton happened to be there as well with Denise Dodson, a very fine realtor in town. One thing I learned was we are at 4.6% toward the 10%
Yes, we declined.
Of housing stock, affordable housing, and I think the leader of the group said we have, to be on track to reach 10%, we'd have to build 37 units a year for what, how many years? The new developments, of course, one of the realtors mentioned are all a million plus. Seems like they're about 1.4, 1.4, 1.5. There are no new construction of homes going for under $800,000. Some people, which I heard, but I questioned, was it true? Some people are going from Airbnbs to Airbnbs to live.
Oh, yeah, I heard that.
Which is absolutely, in my opinion, tragic. One thing I read that was not here, but I did, was curious. Massachusetts law does not allow an absolute limit on the gross floor area of a home, but can limit the property size. And you know what's going on in Martha's Vineyard? Three acres max, you can have, must have three acres to build a 3,500 square foot house in Chilmark. So, you know, people are realizing they need to shrink the houses a little bit. We need to, so, that's a good thing, I think. So, let's see. We're almost there. Want to do one of the board member committee reports, Cape Cod Commission? Can you do that?
No report.
No report. Community preservation?
No meeting, but there might be one soon. There was an agenda item on the select board's agenda to reduce the CPC surcharge from 2% to 1%.
Yes.
So, if that continues, I've asked the Chair, Arden Russell, to call a meeting, convene the CPC.
Okay. Design review. Two things came up. One was, I didn't bring any notes. What's the name of the place on the corner, the beer place?
Best Buy Beverage.
Best Buy Beverage. It was a sign issue, and they have to relocate the sign. If the sign was proper, the height was proper, the lighting was, everything was proper, but they have to move it because it might be causing a problem with drivers on Route 130. And the other thing was Sublime Cannabis, which will be going on, going into Route 28, and it's a beautiful sign, and it passed. It was, of course, perfect, quite exquisite, the sign, very professional looking, so that's coming. We had no issues with that either. Plan review, there was no plan review, right?
No plan review.
And EOC, Environmental Oversight? Nothing? And Historic District?
No meeting.
No meeting? Okay.
I just want to go back. The CPC's public hearing is September 14.
Public hearing?
I think it's at 6:30. Yep.
Okay.
September 14 at 6:30.
What are they going to do? They're going to reduce it to 12 percent. So, where's that other, they're going to go?
It doesn't go anywhere. You just don't get it for community preservation.
But they're still collecting.
To the whiff.
Also.
It can't, it can't, it's two separate votes. It's two separate votes. It doesn't automatically go to the whiff.
Gotcha.
But anyways, Ed.
Okay. Seeing that the time is 7:10, we have a public hearing. I open the public hearing, I should say, and I'll read the public notice. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw, Section 174-24(c) and 174-47, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16, 2023, at 7:10 PM in the LeCoyt Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, to consider an application made by Pleasant Wood Homes LLC for approval of a special permit for a cluster subdivision of property addressed at 20 Tudor Terrace, Assessors Map 29, Parcel 198. The applicant proposes to divide the subject parcel comprised of approximately 6.024 acres into three building lots for single-family home construction while preserving 3.021 acres as protected open space. The plans and submitted application can be viewed in the offices of the town clerk or the town planner submitted by Karen Faulkner, Chair. Okay. So, what came with this is a letter from the applicant's attorney, Chris Corain, dated August 14, 2023, and I'll read it to you. Dear Chairwoman Faulkner, and addressed to the town planner as well, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the Wednesday, August 16, 2023, hearing be continued to September 6, 2023, as the applicant is unavailable on the 16th. Additionally, on behalf of the applicant, I hereby request a 90-day extension of the 135-day time period. The board has to file its decision with the town clerk. So...
So, on the 6th, right?
The 6th is a pretty crowded schedule. We have proposed now Mashpee Planning Board going over public hearing for the zoning articles, Southworth, the 275 Cliniquis, the 12 units, and we've got Southworth on the bedrooms. So, it's a little too much. So, we're thinking September 20 would be a better date. And if he's available, if Mr. Corain and Mr. Marsters are available, 7:20, oh, sorry, September 20 for 7:10 for that hearing.
7:10, we have 5:30 Main Street already. Five, I always think the address wrong. Was it 5:30?
5:30.
We have Marcello, excuse me, we have Mylegney.
Attorney Corain's going to be here anyway.
Pardon me?
Attorney Corain will be here anyway for that hearing.
Okay, so...
So, you could do 7:20 and 7:25.
7:20 and 7, okay. So, so...
Well...
7:20.
Yeah, we're just talking about the 7:10 now.
7:20 is the...
So, may I have a motion to continue the, this matter on Pleasant, Pleasant Wood Homes to permit, for approval of a special permit for a cluster subdivision at 20 Tudor Terrace for September 20 at 7:20 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah?
Vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Passes. 7:20. The second one is a Pleasant Wood Homes, again, I open the public meeting on Pleasant Wood Homes LLC. I'll read the public notice. Pursuant to Mashpee General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Mashpee Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the LeCoyt Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, to consider an application made by Pleasant Wood Homes LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan of land that would create three new 40,000-square-foot building lots by dividing the 6.024-acre subject property addressed at 20 Tudor Terrace, Assessors Map 29, Parcel 198. The remaining land area totaling approximately 3.021 acres is proposed for open space as required by Mashpee Zoning Bylaw. The three lots proposed obtain frontage via an extension of the existing public way called Tudor Terrace. Plans may be reviewed at the offices of the town clerk or town planner at Mashpee Town Hall, submitted by Karen Faulkner, Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. Now, going back to the letter that Mr. Corain wrote, asking for a continuance, he's also asking for a continuance on this matter for definitive approval, definitive subdivision. So, I don't think I need to read the letter again, do I? No.
No.
So, the key part in this letter is additionally, on behalf of the applicant, I hereby request the 90-day extension of the 130-day time period. The board, the board has to file a decision with the town clerk. That is referring, I understand, to, for the definitive subdivision. So, the first motion that we need is...
To extend the...
Pardon me?
To give them a 90-day extension, right?
Yeah. The first motion for the, let's see, we're going to go with September 20 at 7:25, right? Okay. A motion for this matter to be heard on September 20 at 7:25.
So moved.
Well, let me just say what, what it is, for approval of a definitive subdivision.
To continue this matter.
To continue, to continue this matter to September 20, to discuss and perhaps decide approval of a definitive subdivision plan.
7:25?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So moved.
Any, any?
You second.
You second?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, do we have to grant that 90-day?
Yeah, we have, I thought we had to do them on both of them.
Well, we do. I'm going to.
All right.
The second motion would be motion to grant the application request for the 90-day extension of the 135-day period that the board has to file its application with, or decision with the town clerk as to the definitive subdivision plan, and that, again, is, is part of the same motion, same, same issue, and that'll be at 7:25, September 20 continued to, to September 20.
So moved for the applicant, Pleasant Wood Homes LLC.
Thank you.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes. Okay. So, so the first one is at 7:20 on September 20, and the second Pleasant Wood Homes is at 7:25. Okay. Very good.
Will Ed be here?
Ed will be here.
Okay.
Is he in town now or no?
He's in town right now, yes.
Starting to miss him.
Did we need him tonight for anything? No.
No.
Okay. The next issue is new business, discussed, proposed amendments to tree bylaw. If you would, Evan, if you would go over the amendments, things that we really want to change, that we have changed, we want to change.
Prior to Karen and I's presentation to the Select Board relative to the tree preservation bylaw, I had received in writing some questions from the DPW Director relative to the proposal, which identified, I think, a number of opportunities to provide firm clarity to some of the purpose and intent of the bylaw, but also how it functions. So, I made a presentation to the Select Board with Karen, going over the general mechanics of the tree preservation bylaw, and I had also provided to them a memo and an updated draft for their consideration dated, the memo dated August 7, which enumerated to them the questions posed to me by the DPW Director, and an updated draft and a bit of a narrative about how each of those questions was addressed, if necessary. And I had noted to the Select Board that since this was your article, I wanted to present these changes to you with the hopes that you would agree that they are prudent changes to have them consider. So, in your packet is the memo I submitted to the Select Board on August 7, and I should note, just before I dive into it, that none of the proposed changes or amendments to the article alter the scope of this article in any particular way. It's just providing clarity to certain questions. So, in the memo, Catherine asked me the building activities definition. There were two, in the original draft, there are two sections, one in definitions and then one section in applicability that contemplated what a building activity was. And they, there were some overlap, but they wasn't consistent between the two. So, we opted to delete any reference to building activities in the applicability section and add the, add any portions of building activities that were contemplated in the applicability section and make the definition robust, so it covers all the building activities, and the second reference to it is deleted. So, we just have a firm definition in the definitions section. Catherine further noted that we had, and this, in drafting, you know, Karen and I had reviewed a number of bylaws, and to measure the diameter of a tree, there are often multiple references, caliper as a measurement, caliper as a tool, caliper, and then diameter at breast height. And we had every intention of ensuring that we were consistent with our nomenclature, but we had missed a few references to caliper, and we wanted to continually use continuously diameter at breast height. So, every reference to caliper has been removed from the article and exchanged for diameter at breast height, DBH. Catherine had been asked about, you know, hazardous tree definition, who determines the tree? There's no change to, resulting from this question, but I clarified to her that it would be incumbent upon the property owner with an arborist to identify hazardous trees as defined in the section and notify my office of, of the hazardous tree and seek permission of its removal. The arborist would be attesting to the hazardous nature of the tree in consideration of the definition of the article itself. Catherine asked about the protected tree definition. She said, is any size native tree protected? Was a tree of historical significance? What is the trunk diameter, et cetera? What I opted to do, so that there's no question about what a protected tree is, is I built a list of species native to our region
Page five.
That comes from two sources, one from the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension Plant List. I can't recall what the other one was, both legitimate resources that is often used for conservation commissions for suitable tree plantings. We provide a firm list of actual tree species. Any species of tree on that list that is six inches or larger diameter at breast height is a protected tree. No ambiguity. And then she had questions about the applicability, you know, and we had, we have had discussions on this before. Do we want to make this solely connected to building activities? Is a property owner who wants to just remove a tree without connection to a building activity, is he subject to this bylaw? And she further identified a potential loophole, where we initially said any tree removal in, in preparation for building activity within a 12-month window would be subject to the terms of the bylaw, to which she said, I know from dealing with curb cut permits that property owners often will clear their lots three years in advance of any building activity and thus would not be subject to the terms of this bylaw. So, we consider, we propose removing any reference to clearing 12 months prior and require that any, any clear cutting of vacant or undisturbed lots prior to a building activity, no matter when you do this. If you strip your lot at any time, you're subject to the provisions of this bylaw. But to remove the 12 months prior and to allow, and to prevent the clear cutting of undisturbed lots prior to a building activity, we needed to specify specifically that homeowners in that situation on, in pre-existing homes without any connection to a building activity would be exempt from that bylaw. I guess I would need to note that there is an unlikely loophole in that, you know, kind of approach, in that presumably someone could get a tree preservation plan, clear their lot, build their home, and then we would be monitoring for one year prior to their occupancy permit that their tree preservation plan is acceptable and consistent with their approval. So, after that 12 months, there's no building activity, presumably someone could go in and they clear their lot. We don't think that this is going to be a likely outcome of the endeavor, but I want to note that is a possibility. Catherine was concerned about municipal tree work on tree properties. She wanted to see an exemption for municipal activities, which we have included in the new draft. She noted, there's a waiver section, which we had discussed before, about the, in the event of a significant storm or other natural event, the provisions of this bylaw being waived so that property owners could be, could remove damaged or diseased trees. We've made, I've made no suggested changes to this based on that comment, but she, and we haven't instilled a time period. So, if you would like to consider that further and put in some time period for the declaration of emergency, I'm all ears, but I haven't made any changes in that regard. Catherine also noted the tree yard. She just wanted to note that the tree yard does not include a road, the road right, the road right-of-way along the frontage for any property, which is true. It's well noted. I didn't make any edits to the article based on that. I just responded to her question. But yes, the road right-of-way is not subject to the provisions of this article. Karen and I, when we were drafting this, wanted also consistency with terminology. There was one leftover reference to the tree save area. The tree save area is the area around the critical root zone that has to be protected, protected during construction activity. It was only one reference to it, so we opted to just remove tree save area and make sure we're consistent throughout the article and say that critical root zone needs to be protected. And then she asked about the map of the tree fund that is contemplated in the article, and we have checked with the finance director on setting up such a fund. I did reach out to the town accountant, who did reach out to the Department of Revenue and has an opinion from, I guess, a DOR bureaucrat up in Boston, who questioned the ability for us to establish a revolving fund for this specific account, which Karen and I want to follow up with counsel on solely because both Concord and Linfield do this exact thing, same thing, as we've considered it, under the Massachusetts General Law, that the gentleman from DOR said you cannot do. So, this is an outstanding question, and we're going to seek a legal opinion on it because, quite frankly, I'm not, I'm not convinced the gentleman is 100% correct at this point. So, we want to have that answered.
So, we keep it in and might be able to strike it on the town meeting floor?
Yeah, well, we're going to get a firm answer on the, on the tree fund proportion of this article. So, again, I don't think any of these proposed changes alter the scope of this article, but we wanted to provide the clarity. We figure if the DPW Director is noting these things, other people will have questions. There are a couple of things I thought of that were not resultant from the DPW Director's comments that I did include in the draft to Select Board that I'd like to share with you now. We define a tree yard in the Town of Mashpee as being the minimum building setbacks of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw, so 15, 15, and 40, essentially. But this board, under cluster subdivisions, often establishes a unique set of dimensional criteria, like for, for a special permit, where the...
Page seven, bottom.
The side setbacks are reduced, the front setbacks reduced. So, I thought it would be prudent to consider that in the article so that for any, any residential lot created pursuant to a special permit for a cluster development, that the tree yard be consistent with the dimensional criteria that you've established in your decision. Further, we propose providing an exemption of this particular article for any lot that is subject to review and approval by the Conservation Commission, because it's almost like double dipping. The Conservation Commission is...
Page six, number two.
Is regulating trees already and collecting mitigation for those. So, we felt it would be prudent to exempt property owners so that they don't have to do this twice.
Well, we would have had to, wouldn't we? Because we don't have jurisdiction over wetland.
Well, I mean, we, it would be, we wouldn't be reviewing it under the Wetlands Protection Act. We certainly wouldn't have review under that authority. But it would be prudent, in my opinion, to exempt any wetlands, any lot subject to wetlands jurisdiction for the reason that it's all... jurisdiction for the reason that it's already being done.
Yep.
So apologies for the last minute proposals, but we felt it was important to consider these.
Page seven, table three, you have an asterisk, right?
Let me just get there. Page seven.
You have an asterisk. So I immediately looked for the asterisks above it. Do you know what I mean? Should you put the asterisks in the table after minimum tree yard? Do you know what I mean? Like I, you know, when there's an asterisk at the bottom of the page, you look up to see where, so maybe put the asterisks here?
Sure.
I don't know. I just think if I was a lawyer, I'd say, mm, that aster-
So just put an asterisk here so that people know that this asterisk pertains to this table?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's the whole entire table?
You know where it says minimum tree yard, the title?
Yeah.
Just put the asterisks there, just so you know the asterisks below the table applies to the table.
Easy enough?
Yes, one. That is. That's one of my mildest comments.
Easy enough?
Yeah. Good one, Rob.
Oh.
True, this is true.
Okay. All right, if you would.
I had one, one comment.
Yes.
When you talk about on page one, caliper.
Yes.
You're going to eliminate that and you're going to go with the DBH?
Yep.
Diameter at breast height?
Yes.
I would suggest that right following in parentheses, refer to figure one, might be held in right where the picture is.
In my memo or in the article itself?
In the article itself, at least for the first time that it's replicated.
Okay.
And then figure one is a little bit inconsistent, other than the fact that it has DBH equals diameter of the trunk at 4.5 feet above ground. It doesn't refer to breast height.
Let me, let me say this. Why don't you hold that question until we go over it? And let me just preface this by saying, as somebody who has knowledge about what an arborist does, this language in here on the math and the calculations is, is the language of the arborist. So we don't have to know exactly how to calculate, but if you want to learn how to calculate, it's here and we can explain it.
I just, and I'm-
What?
I just wanted to respond to Rob's question that the DBH question, that the definition of diameter at breast height specifically identifies that the diameter of the trunk of tree, four and a half feet above the grade.
But I would think the first time you referred to it, you might refer to figure one. Or maybe table one came first.
Table one.
Came before the figure one, just so that-
Uh, it's, yeah, we could do that.
So figure one was really-
Is it all three of them?
It's describing critical root zone. It mentions DBH, but it's really trying to-
So we want to, we do it to the trees.
So it mentions DBH, but it's really trying to provide you an understanding of how you calculate the critical root zone.
So you should say the first table, table one.
Okay. If you would, put, put the definitions on the left side and put in the middle, the page two, does the tree preservation bylaw apply to you? And then the tree yard, put the picture, the green on the end there. So one, two, three. Okay. I hope this will make it simple for you. Number one, does the tree preservation bylaw apply to you? Are you the owner of a lot or parcel of land in Mashpee? If yes, you go to question two. Will there be work performed on your lot as defined as a building activity as per the tree bylaw? If no, stop. If yes, move on to the next question. Take a look at the bylaw there, page two. Those are the definitions of building activity. If you're doing one of those activities, the tree bylaw applies to you. Okay? Any questions?
No.
All right. So we moved on to question three. Do you have a tree or tree in your tree yard? Okay, what is a tree yard? Right here, this green area, which, which is the boundaries, you know, the setbacks, 40 feet in the front, 15 on the sides, and 15 in the back for R5, R3. So we're talking about the tree yard here. Do you have trees in your tree yard which have a diameter at breast height of six inches or greater and are protected trees? Well, we already said, trees that have a diameter of six inches or greater are protected trees, provided they're on that list of protected trees. So say yes. If you don't have any trees in the tree yard, if your lot is already stripped, the answer is no. If it's yes, go to question four. Are you intending to have protected trees in the tree yard cut down? Yes, I'm going to have trees cut down because I want a little sight to the road and it's too, it's too dense. Okay? So the answer is yes. So I'm going on to question five. Do you want to replace the protected tree with new trees by purchasing and installing new trees rather than paying into the tree fund? If yes, go to number six for more information. Okay. So this is the math part, which you really don't have need to understand, but which we can go over it. We measure four and a half feet up the tree. We put, put a tape measure around the tree. We get the circumference divided by pi, you know, 3.14 will give you the diameter at breast height. Each tree you purchase has to be a minimum DBH of two inches. And the bylaw says at this section, that one half inch of diameter at breast height of new tree is needed to mitigate, or we're talking about paying into the tree fund now, is needed to mitigate for each inch at breast height of protected trees proposed for removal. So if we have a tree that is 20 inches diameter and breast height, okay, circumference over pi equals diameter of breast height, we're saying one half inch of DBH is needed to mitigate. So we multiply 0.5 inches times 20 inches and we get 10 DBHs. So what does that mean? If we go out to purchase the trees, each tree has to have a DBH or should have a minimum DBH of two inches. So we'd need five trees or any combination of trees to total 10 DBH. All right? Do you understand that? Yeah. If you're going to pay into the tree fund, it's dollar for dollar. So you would go to the landscape place, pick out the trees, make sure there are two inches DBH or more, and, and get a cost on that and bring that back to the town planner with the trees you're going to get. And one thing, if you cut down an overstorey tree, which is a 40, can grow 40 feet, you have to buy an overstorey tree. And that's listed on that table there, what are overstorey trees. So actually, the best deal, and I'll tell you why this is a good thing, is to plant your own trees because it's cheaper.
Yes.
A lot cheaper. And number two, this 0.5 that we used, nobody that I saw in any of the other tree bylaws used such an inexpensive figure. So we're not trying to hurt anybody by doing this. It's just, you know, it's, it behooves you, it's in your best interest to plant the trees as opposed to go out and buy them and then have an arborist plant them and, you know, all that rigmarole. Yeah.
All right. I do that, I plant a tree, and next year it dies. So somebody come up and say, hey, you have to replant that, replant that. Somebody's going to enforce this.
Yeah. You need to ensure survival for one year following.
That's a good point. When you, we look at it to see, did you violate the critical root area?
Yeah.
If you planted something too close to that radius of where that tree should be protected.
Sometimes you buy a tree.
You buy a dead tree. They guarantee the tree, like at Mahoney's, for a year.
Yeah, and then it died.
Yeah, but not, not if, if, if somebody does, if they plant it or someone else plants it. I've forgotten.
Doesn't matter. You still-
No, there isn't, there is a distinction. They will guarantee it, I believe, if.
All right. You live to guarantee it.
Yeah.
They die.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the town coming out and saying-
Within one year of your, of your building permit or subsequent to occupancy or completion of whatever building activity you're doing, there, we will be monitoring. This, this program requires monitoring by town staff. And if it dies, regardless of the cause, within one year, it needs to be fixed.
Replaced.
So my other question is, is the town going to have to hire a tree ward? The cost is going to be?
It's going to have to be a mathematical tree ward.
Yeah, right. I mean, to force-
It could, we, I mean, it could be delegated to the planning board.
That's what I used to do that, huh?
That's right. We used to do that.
And now, another, I take a critical tree, have the area, when I replant that critical tree, can, I don't have to plant it in the same spot.
No.
Okay, that would be clear.
You could plant it on your neighbor's land if you get permission.
But that wasn't clear.
Yeah.
Okay. But all my questions.
At this juncture, we're not planning on requiring additional staff, but obviously we, it's a new program and the town managers assured us that we would have staff.
Well, I was asking that because we're going to be trying to collect funds. Who's going to handle the funds? Who's going to go to the town manager? And the funds are, I mean, if that's another.
That's what we're working on right now.
Yeah. I think it would be prudent for us, if this passes, to come up with a, like a, a tree preservation plan, whereas presumably, I've always considered the tree fund to be a function of the DPW and their park beautification, street tree planting, all of that. But obviously, the town would have an interest in directing-
The fund.
The funds in some way. I think a, a plan would be a good way to accomplish that. But we're, the tree fund question is still outstanding.
Okay.
So Karen, now, what's, can you just want to clarify, what's, what's cheaper for the homeowner? Is it the-
It's cheaper to replant than to go out to the landscape because you're on a, like this cow back, this point here, you'd have to, you'd have to plant a dollar for dollar. You'd have to get a 20 DBH, 20-inch DBH tree or trees at the landscape place. Where here is, you're only talking about-
So if you're removing protected trees-
But is it cheaper to put a new tree in or is it cheaper to pay the fund?
Cheaper to put in a new tree.
Definitely.
I mean, you know, it, I mean, for the, for the acquisition of the tree itself.
Yeah.
And if you're planting it yourself. Obviously, we haven't considered what labor might be and all of that.
Right.
But it would be, you know, the, what Karen is trying to enumerate is that to purchase the tree and install the tree would be 50% of the cost of paying into the fund.
Okay.
And a two-inch diameter, that's a pretty skinny tree. It's not like, you need Jack Armstrong to put the tree in.
I bought a little skinny tree like that, it was almost $250.
What tree was it? A red maple?
Yeah, it was a spr- I don't know, my wife called it, it was a spry one. But it's only-
Well, those, all these most-
It's still only this big.
They're very expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you don't have to buy a red maple unless, you don't have to.
So I'm good with all these changes. Do we need to make a, take a vote?
Yeah.
The, the vote would be a motion to approve the changes as far as we've gone absent the, the vehicle for the fund, let's call it the fund, and pass it on to the Select Board.
And, and, okay, so I, I make that motion and I authorize the chair to work with the town planner to finalize that language regarding that town account.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous?
Good job.
Okay.
If we define two inches.
Two, diameter, two inches. Yes, sir. Okay. So next, oh, we have Aquay Heights Highlands, rather. I've looked through the paperwork, Evan, on the, on everything, and it looks like he has purchased the Logix radar sign. And that's all that is required, is what's left of the, fulfilling the completion of the tripartite agreement.
So I'm, I'm working out with police, DPW, how the transfer, handover of the sign will occur. That's a little unclear at this time, but I do have proof of the purchase. I didn't have to write to the bank. So for, everything that's secured by the tripartite agreement has been satisfied. I, I, I will continue to note, we had some heavy rainfall last week. There are still outstanding issues at the subdivision. But as it pertains to things, items secured by the agreement, that agreement is satisfied, you will not need to collect additional security. The, I did meet with Ed, the developer, Lawrence Lynch, and a few of the property owners who have the issues with the ends of their driveways. We took measurements of some of those driveways and they are just dead flat. So they did, Ed, Lawrence Lynch, and the property owners discussed what they would like to do to resolve those issues. The developers committed to performing that work. I don't know if it's been scheduled, but agreements were made between the developer and Ed. Ed will be on site to inspect the work to be performed to see if we can mitigate or remove the driveway problems. I did also meet that same Diggs. It was after that torrential downpour. Ed received some reports from the Dorsey's down the end of the street that the new drain that they had put in was not performing. The volume of water was so immense, I did see significant evidence of, of ponding in his, in his grass, in his yard again. So in, in a, the evidence showed that in a substantial downpour like we had, it didn't appear to be performing the way we had hoped. I still think that was an outlier event, but I know that the Dorsey's remain a little unhappy with that.
Can I ask you a question, Evan?
Yes.
I, I know that rain and I saw what it did to the town. Is it, is it expected to perform in such a situation? It was so extreme.
It was, it was extraordinary. I mean, I, I had, I did communicate with Mr. Dorsey and his wife by text that day and I'd said something along those lines that I know, it's got to be frustrating. But the amount, the volume of water that came down, I had phone calls all over the town. Everyone got flooded. So, but I just want to note that we will be continuing to pay attention to this. We will be continuing to ensure that some of the outstanding issues got, have been resolved. It was scheduled to go make a site visit with the building commissioner earlier this week to evaluate the materials being stored on the site. We had, ended up having a conflict, we're going tomorrow, to see what his opinion is relative to what's being stored there and its connection to any building activity that's currently under, underway. I anticipate we'll try and take some action to have some of those items removed. And there's been continuous, some dirt removal of the mountain.
We have not.
It's not all gone though. But we are, we, we are continuing to monitor. Say it again, Tim.
I said, was that from the rain? The dirt that got removed?
Not to my knowledge, but I'm sure some of it ended up eroding down.
Well, I, I checked the drains and before you leave, you should, they cleaned some of them out there.
We, we are on them like a hawk.
I went up that night with the heavy rain and the yard was really flooded.
I, yeah, it was.
Two weeks before that, after they put the drain in, the new drain, it rained heavy and that thing was working pretty good. That rain, so this rainstorm was horrible.
The velocity of the water just seemed so great that it was just ripping right up the curb.
There was two inches on the road coming off of my house that, that piece of property was going down, all the way to the beach.
And we had good drains that were back to town, too. It, it was raining. It was too heavy for them.
From many drains.
They drained, but took up the lawn.
I had to drive home in South Sandwich Road. I mean, I like destroyed my, my license plate was, was, was bad.
Was that the red car? I don't know.
My, my car made it. I thought I was going to float home. It was like Noah.
Get the oars up.
But that's the report on Aquay Highlands. I, I, the driveway issue is one that we hope to resolve. We still have the outstanding maintenance question. I would, I would, I would posit that as it pertains to the declaration of default, that the items that we've been considering and seeking action on have been rectified. But I think, as you are all aware and as we've continued to state, that there are issues that I think go beyond subdivision control, building code related issues and, and provisions of the special permit that we'll want to continue to monitor and enforce if necessary.
Therefore, we can remove the declaration of default and it will no longer be on the agenda?
Yes.
We don't need them all to-
No.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question. So, um, so he got the sign.
Got the sign.
And then who, who's responsible for putting it up? Is it him or?
I think it'll be the DPW, but that's the question. It's either the police or the DPW. I need to coordinate with Captain Rosen, with Catherine to see who accepts it and where it goes and who does what with it. That's unclear. There is some definition in your permit, but I think it provides some flexibility as well.
Is it, I thought we wanted one that could be moved.
It can.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I think it's at the discretion of the PD.
So it's in the, yeah, it's in the special permit where it's supposed to be, but there So it's in the, yeah, it's in the special permit where it's supposed to be, but there were a couple of spots that the neighborhood felt were critical. And you know how you put that sign up for a while and it calms stuff down, then they can move it. And then it calms down that other area, then they put it back. So they were, the neighborhood was fine with one that was on wheels that could be moved.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So, but it's in the, it's in the special permit, the two spots they.
In the permit, you specified a model, a specific model. This is, you know, it's ten years removed, but it's this B model, just the current version.
Yes, oh my goodness. I remember those meetings.
Okay, that's, there's no board engineer report, water quality report. Today, I'm going to talk about drinking water.
You look up that thing, I got it.
I don't know when I looked up, but I did some reading on it. And before I hand out this map, which is quite startling.
Yeah.
I wanted to say a little bit, PFAS is per and polyfluoroalkyl and is considered a forever chemical, but it's in the family of 14,000 other chemicals. We only talk here about PFAS. How do we pronounce it? PFOA, you know, F O A. Anyway, Mashpee set, not Mashpee, the state of Massachusetts sometime back set a limit of 20 parts per trillion, which was much lower than the US EPA, which was 70 parts per million, trillion, trillion, BPT. And in March, the US EPA reset it to four parts per trillion. And they still say it's very dangerous. We have, 98% of Americans have PFAS in our body, in our blood. And where is PFAS coming from? Food packaging and anything that has a stain repellent, a water repellent, it's got some kind of PFAS in it.
Flavor toxin.
And it flakes off and it goes into landfill, it goes into the air, it goes into our waters, et cetera. Supposedly, the chemical manufacturers have voluntarily phased out production of PFAS and PFOA about 10 years ago, but these comment, the compounds are still existing in the water. They're not going away. Down the road, it's going to get costly for water, but I don't want to get into the money part now, but the bipartisan infrastructure law signed by President Biden in 2021 provided 50 billion to the US EPA for drinking water and wastewater. So some part of those billions will go to, I don't know, building filters and things that they're building now, but they're, oh, unbelievably expensive.
Not nearly enough money, not nearly enough.
Not nearly enough money. So I guess we're just going to have to live with it. And this map, I hand wrote what the readings are in different areas. It's absolutely shocking. And if anybody can tell me why Clarksburg would have 813 parts per trillion. Clarksburg is up by Williams College. Anyway, let me pass it out. Evan? So as you can see, Mashpee isn't doing so great. 124 parts per trillion and the EPA, US EPA says four parts per trillion are still dangerous. So I don't know how we'll ever get to that. And interesting enough, the gray area around Boston, no data collection. I wonder why? It could be really high.
Yeah.
Could be really high.
It absolutely is.
Does anybody have any idea why Groton or is there a chemical plant or is there something going on there, like Lennox?
It could have been just a firefighter training. I mean, Mashpee, it's all coming from the base.
Yeah.
Groton and all the chair factories.
What's up there?
Groton, the chair factory.
Oh.
And then she is.
Chairs.
Chemicals and stuff.
Okay.
The chair company in the United States.
Oh, it is. Groton is the chair company in the United States.
But that whole area, you know.
Does anyone know what's going on at Clarksburg?
No, I don't.
Not much besides PFAS contamination.
What's that?
Not much besides PFAS contamination.
Yeah. Must be like an industry there.
Yeah. Well, anyway, that's just something to think about. And yet, right in the middle of some of the high levels, there's clear, which is nothing. So how does that figure? How does it not run into, I mean, look at Groton and you got all this black stuff here, then you get to white, how come none of that drips down to the white area? Amazing.
Really sad.
Anyway, that's, that's that, just a little.
You're just a wonder of good news, jeez.
Well, I wanted to do drinking water, I've been talking about drinking water and there's no.
I'm sticking to beer, beer.
I know.
I want some water.
I'm drinking the water here, it's from the bubble. I don't know, it could still have PFAS in it.
The cup is.
All right, well, just file it away. Because, you know, I'm figuring particularly the senior members on the board here, we've made it this far, so.
Well, you know, the thing that's quite striking is that everybody pushes drinking water and everybody's carrying bottles and everybody's picking a lot more water these days than ever before.
That's true. And we don't know if that bottled water.
And don't get over the good stuff, the bad stuff.
We don't know.
It's just frightening.
It is, it really is. Okay, we've done the town planner report and we've done the committee, so we can have public comment. Anyone who cares to speak on any matter, please come up.
Lynn Barbie, 73, Surf Drive. The tree bylaw, I think it's a wonderful thing. I don't think I caught all of the details in your conversation there because I didn't have something to look at. But I would just like to ask a question. It sounds like it's premised on, the question is, are you going to be doing building activity?
Right.
And if the answer is no, can then somebody just go ahead and clear cut like was done on Elgonquin?
No.
No.
If this bylaw was in effect, right?
The reason you can't, Lynn, is because of this last item on the building activity list, and I just need to read it so you see it. Well, you read it, Evan.
Sure.
I mean, what if you haven't applied for anything at all?
You're not doing, you're never going to do.
So that was the same question presented to me by the DPW director. Initially, we were contemplating any clearing, grading, or anything like that 12 months prior to the issuance of the permit. So we, but she said, well, what if I do it two years prior? And we said, oh, well, that's a very good point. So we removed any reference to a time window. So if you have an undisturbed vacant lot that is buildable or not, you cannot clear it.
And if you go ahead and do it, then you have to either replace the trees or put into the tree fund.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's what was not real, I just didn't understand that, but thank you very much because every time I drive past that clear cut lot, it makes me really angry, so.
Well, that was the whole genesis of my even looking at a tree bylaw.
Right.
I saw that particularly that, you know, that he cut all those trees in derogation of that stop work order. It meant nothing to him.
And they're still sitting there like that?
The stop work order is still on the tree?
No, 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 the land, nothing's happened to that. Nothing has been created on that piece of property. Which is very ripe for affordable housing, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else for public comment? Sir? You care to?
I hope I'm in the right place, but are we talking about food and terrorists?
Uh, continued.
Continued till September 20th.
I'm sorry?
The meeting, the public hearing, it was continued till September 20th. So it'll open again then.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah.
On the Evergreen, the industrial park, the distillery.
Yep.
I noticed it's parking on like the green space. You know, they had a problem, the, they had Roche Brothers with the health center. I don't know if you're on the board, they were parking on that.
Yes.
And we gave, I think we gave permission to park there, but I noticed today, some of the, it's killing all the grass.
Yep.
And I noticed there's a rundown and there's two drain systems right there. So if you keep on doing that, it's still having those drain systems, it gets filled up. And then a lot of the industrial park up behind Roche Brothers, you go with it. Every time they were going to put a building, it came to the planning board. Now that that gateway, it's got four or five of them up and it never comes to the planning board, the engineer to see, oh, the drainage just don't, I go, wow, it looks like he's doing it right, but I don't understand why they don't come to the board no more.
I, under the zoning bylaw, I'm not aware of anything that would require your review other than the fact that the industrial park was created pursuant to a development agreement in the early 2000s with the Cape Cod Commission, which has lapsed. There's not an enforceable development agreement any longer.
All right.
And so all of the projects that, since I've been here, have been approved by the zoning board of appeals and reviewed by the zoning board of appeals.
So the engineer does look at them?
They hire Ed almost in area.
All right, so that was.
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah.
Make sure they were doing it right.
Yay, good eye, good eye.
Yeah, hot eye.
Yeah.
So what should we do about the business that's kind of parking their cars everywhere? Should they get a call, the business down the street that's?
No, I don't mind it today. I was coming home, it's all cars there, they're parking on this.
Should we send Ed over to look at it or?
I mean, I don't know what, when you do them, I mean, the thing was GM pack and they do a good business. Unless they can park across the street, because that's not open during the night time.
I know, I know the, I know Jack, when he was the deputy.
They, that's why.
Oh, do they, yeah.
I know when Jack was the deputy, he may have been on the board at the time, he was concerned because they were parking around the hydrant. There was, and water service. So the fire department intervened in that regard. You're talking about that center strip, right, between their two entrance ways?
All right.
Right, that's what you're referring to?
No, it's where the, his building is. There's a park, the parking lot, and then he has a green space that comes to the road, all the cars are parked on an angle.
Yeah, okay.
On the green space there.
Yeah.
I didn't see, I don't know, there must be a fire item, someone.
It's a little bit further down the street. It's been going on like that for years. I have, I do pay attention to it. Ultimately, I think if there are any portions of your approval, like drainage or even just sedimentation erosion control that are being impacted because of the cars parked, we would want to intervene in some way.
Right, well, so you have a parking lot to catch what drips off of the cars into the drainage, do you know what I mean? Like, it's not just that.
Well, we make.
That they're killing the grass. Cars are supposed to go in parking lots with drainage.
But the green space, the grass is, there's erosion happening, there's no grass and then the.
It'll ruin the drainage.
Would you like me to reach out to the property owner and ask what he, how he can resolve it?
Also, when you don't park on asphalt, your drippings from the car go into.
The ground.
The ground. There's no way to have it go through the drainage system, which has a catch basin to catch some of that pollution.
Would you like me to?
Yes, yes, I think we should look into it.
I will invite, I'll speak with the property owner and see if we can't find a way to resolve or mitigate that potential issue in the summer season.
Right, I mean, sometimes, and it always happens like, you know, July 4th, but if you're seeing it, if you're seeing it consistently, week after week after week in the summer, then they have to, right, they have to get more parking, they have to figure out more parking. They have to get satellite park, like Knockabout, we made them have the people park the cars over across from Town Hall and walk back. I don't know, that's a big deal in my neighborhood. There's not enough parking for Knockabout, so.
I will speak with Mr. Agarback.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Time to adjourn.
I beg most to adjourn.[1796.82]